Do you have a good day? And it was beautiful. I was really surprised at how, at least where I was, it really poured. Of course, if you were in an office in the ABC. Yeah. We developed a little. These are all very comfortable. I think they are. I really, a lot of people like those. And I think they quite honestly fill up both ways. How are you? I'm not telling. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. You get your shoe car out?
Yes.
Does it help? I'm gonna steal it tonight.
Sure. It's fun, too.
You haven't really had a chance to get the, take the top down, have you?
Oh, yeah.
What, twice?
Three. You should probably get one thing on the agenda. I'll probably get home before my wife closes. There's only one thing on the agenda. Oh, yeah. Well, that means it'll all be here six, six, six. Don't they take up the slack? That's always my favorite part. Is it really?
How's Sandy feeling?
Good.
Really?
Yeah. I know it's hard to believe.
Well, no, she's really been through it.
Oh, yeah.
Again.
Yeah. One thing after another. But overall, I mean, not, you know, not everything is gone, but, you know, she's feeling much better.
How are you doing?
I'm doing all right. Can't complain.
Good? Is she gonna come back to Nils and Bills? Maybe I don't.
She still has trouble cracking and holding things with that bad hand. So.
That might not work for her.
Yeah.
And I'm having nerve issues flying, sorry. But they told me I have to change my lifestyle before I begin the third surgery. So I'm okay, well, then maybe think about it.
Change your lifestyle.
Because at the food pantry we're at, we lift.
Yeah.
Everything, you know, we're lifting big stuff and I have to stop that. After the second surgery, she gave me ten pound limitation, well, that went off the window.
Yeah. That's what they told Sandy, too.
And then you, if I want to add dirt to my garden plot, because I'm gonna raise bed.
What do you do? Five bag of dirt, one step up?
Well, yeah, if you need five shakes of bungee, fill up it, yeah. It's, you know, just gives now. I don't know where it goes.
I've been there.
I don't know where it goes.
It's just one thing after one thing. Water service thing. Maybe we'll get out of here by seven thirty?
Really? Beautiful.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah. Hi, haven't seen you forever, you know, two days.
So how have you done?
Okay, can't complain, most of them are started.
No, I'm never complaining.
I have to ask you a question. Are you going to marry? Are you going to marry Sammy?
Probably. We helped go through the church.
We ended up getting out here before we moved over here.
But after I, I think I mentioned that, so I think we're on Broadway in the United.
But you have, you know, your union's gonna be closed. Union, a closed union where they need rich.
Oh, that's right. Well, I'll find a way, I didn't know the old road. You know, I just thought the door would be there, you know.
Yeah, because that's what I've got to remember more about, I think, when I say.
Because there are a lot of folks that.
Everyone's tired. You know, more.
Yeah, yeah. And I hate to say this, because when my, I think like signs in my world always. But God, it was so great.
Are we talking about the same? Hi, Dad.
No, I know. He insisted on helping me, he wanted to help me.
Wow, Dad.
To talk to all my friends, to open up pictures, to ask questions, to ask about my son. The kids run up through this, my son, my other son, his kids went to school here and made this security for, I'm going here, they went out and they got stairs where they used to. And he would sit there on the terrace, and I was looking for, I was sitting here, and the mass was beautiful.
That's great.
He asked me about the music, about the movies, and he was very accountable. Because I thought, is this the same man? But that kind of fun, the people, you know, are more involved than I. It's such, it's such a funeral.
Oh, I think with the friends.
Well, I have two, me with ladies on Sunday.
Yeah.
We can't have donuts Sunday during that, but Saint Mary's could on Sunday.
I don't think we ever did. We didn't have any on Sunday.
Because that's why that's just where somebody said, you know, but.
I wasn't gone anyway. I was at my church all the way.
You know, and, and there's so many things about Saint Mary's that I would rather have. Because the acoustic side, you know, relates. But since you're in the reason, I'm going in. But we have to go with the church, so I guess somebody. My kids were there, also, can you imagine their confidence?
Oh, yeah, we are. Do you have an issue? And if I have to say, I have to be a woman.
Yeah, no, it's nice that you were gonna say a big, that was.
Well, I, this is my third time doing that.
Oh, okay, I know I got, you know, something because it's, it's dumb.
Yeah, okay.
But I took it in, so, yeah, just really.
It's so working.
Oh, wow. Hi. Good to see you, too. How are you? No, good, I'm glad you guys, I don't look to the moon, because, well, we, we have this, my son's ass. Come on, we all get to, you know, some time to, it's sad. And I wouldn't have done it anyway, because it's. So. Have you saw my? It's a, and a strip, and a group, that's, it's.
They're expensive, and they come for a variety of things.
Yeah, I've heard. It's, um, I'm, I'm keeping my day, I'm, I'm, they are, they are, well, really, Japanese. Like the driving, the driving, in Germany, or something.
Yeah, that was great.
Which I don't get, you know, what's, I'm trying to, so. Although this is, um, this is, this is, you know, I mean, I thought, I don't know, so. But I love it.
Hopefully we'll see you next month.
And stir the, you know.
Yeah, because I have a cash flow, and I'm sending it to you. That's, I, but I'm trying to jerk to the product.
What you girls? Yeah, you can do that there last year, your hair, your skin is more.
Yeah, it's just.
They were horrible about leaving their trash cans out there and no, we don't gift ticket, but lately it's been pretty good. So please keep up that good work. Uh, this Sunday at the high school, they're gonna have the Special Olympics are gonna be there. So if anybody's available, unfortunately, I just found out about it. I'm not even gonna be there 'cause I have to work that day. So, but if, if somebody's available to be at the high school Special Olympics. Uh, down at summer, if spring is here, summer is coming. Take care of your yards. Uh, besides, as, as, uh, as Frank was saying about the grass, also make sure, cause I went to a person's house and, and look at those trees, if they're bad, get somebody out there to take care of. Cause you know, after the winter and after all that ice, you know, some of them just come down. So if you have a tree that's out there that's not doing great, then you probably need to get somebody to look at it. It happened with me before. It was a tree that I knew needed to get taken down and, and guess what? Guy took it down for me, but that wasn't a good thing. So, uh, go ahead and get that taken care of. Uh, the old gig though, talk to Omar and it's coming along. It's coming along. You know, it's gonna be, you know, soon and he's saying, you know, within the next month or so, you know, I know when you look at it, you don't think so, but he's saying, he, I called him up and that's what he told me. So I'm just repeating what he said, just coming along. So hopefully that'll be taken care of and no problem. Uh, I guess I want to be pretty fast. I guess that was it. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Spinks?
Yeah. I hope everybody had a good Easter. I know I did and, um, enjoyed. Our granddaughters were in, um, uh, from New York and they all over who was gonna ride in Papa's little Mianna. So the youngest one won. She's 12, going on 20. But we had a lot of fun. It's so nice to, the weather cooperated and everything was good. So, and, uh, for one of y'all that didn't get to see the Easter Bunny's yard, which is also known as my yard as well, it will be coming down Wednesday. I promised a school that I would keep it up a little, uh, a special needs school that didn't get out yet. So, and my, my grass, I hope I don't get, because of my grass has grown quite a bit since I put all those eggs out there. So, um, I didn't get quite a thousand eggs out there this year, but I think there was what, probably about eight hundred. So it seems to grow every year. So it's always exciting to watch neighbors walk down with their grandkids or their kids or people stop by and get their pictures. So it's been a fun thing to do every year. It's kind of tradition now. Um, thank you to the, uh, guys, uh, working out in that rain this morning on the another water bank break on sector, pretty bad one. Um, but they were out there in the rain working on it. Those guys, they're, they're amazing in what they get done. I know it's their job, but they go beyond their job too. So thank you Service Department and Water Department for doing that. Greencroft still, um, of course Mike, every time he does like this when I come up, cause he knows I'm gonna be talking about Greencroft, um, where the covert was replaced. Still some really bad, uh, potholes, but what we're waiting for is for the asphalt plant to open up. So we're kinda at their mercy right now, but it, it has slowed down the speeders on Greencroft. That's one good thing about it. So they don't come flying down there. But, um, and also, um, there were some concerns by several residents and myself as well, where they replaced the cover on Greencroft. Um, it sets back and there's just a smaller fence. So, you know, kids will be kids. It kinda goes down and it's open on both sides to get down to the creek. And kids are gonna be kids. It's not deep down there, but it's still, they took a fall. So, um, Service Department, they are gonna be putting some signs up for me to do trespassing. And we're talking, me and Mike have been going back and forth, um, to see, um, if I could get some shrubbery or something there. So more changes coming on Greencroft. Across our fingers, no more water bank break. I know that there was a wreck in that area. There was some electric outage for a little while. Some of the houses were affected, but, uh, they jumped on that pretty good. That was pretty bad to have that happen on Easter, but thank goodness it happened later and people had already got their cooking done. So that was good. Let's see, um, uh, eighty-four Broadway Avenue, Broadway Diner. Yanni's still looking for a couple of girls to, uh, give his girls that are working a lot there, um, some help. So still looking for some help at Broadway Diner. He haven't had a chance to get there, get there. The food is absolutely amazing. Very reasonable to go there and fresh squeezed orange juice. You don't get that much at restaurants. So everything is made and prepared and really good. So that is where Old Chris Restaurant, Chris's Restaurant used to be. So go see Yanni there. It's, uh, amazing. Good place to patronize. Let's see, uh, next speaker series for the Historical Society is going to be Friday, May ninth at seven at the Community Room. And this one's gonna be a chat with Bedford's own Tim Taylor. So that will be good again at seven o'clock. And let's see, um, pies, the strawberry pies are on sale for the Strawberry Festival. Strawberry Festival is thirteen, fourteenth, fifteenth. New this year will be a father's, a father-child look-alike contest on Father's Day. So it falls on the fifteenth. The last day falls on the fifteenth. Um, there's some information in the hallway and on our website for the strawberry pies are, it's, uh, Mary Coche doing those. Um, please again, help out with picking up the trash. Um, seems like the weather's getting better and so the trash is getting worse. It's, it's like now that you see with the wind being blown in the snow and all that being done, you see where the trash has accumulated over the winter time. So please, I know it's not your trash. It's not my trash either. So if you can help out, if it's on your tree lawn or just out walking, please do your part to keep Bedford clean. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening. Uh, resident, uh, visits and calls. Since the April seventh council meeting, I've visited the homes of a number of War Two residents as well as responded to resident phone inquiries at my home. Uh, resident comments and inquiries included, but not limited to, uh, street debris, clogged store water rates on Lincoln, speeding on High Street, people not stopping at stop signs, missing or reviving street curbs, structures on residential streets such as High Street, uh, residential property owners storing accumulating trash outside their homes, routine illegally parked vehicles at Cowl's dead end near the Tush Lot, uh, broken liquor bottles at Tap Park Shelter and significant volume of discarded food, paper and plastic bottle trash on the asphalt parking lot. Um, family with children left Tap Park due to concerns of teens loitering on park property. Uh, one resident left a message in opposition to report a soccer expansion at Bedford appreciation to the ci- uh, city for pothole repairs, uh, completed on Avery and elsewhere. Uh, disabled, disabled and seniors need for home repair and maintenance assistance, periodic gunshots in the vicinity of the apartment buildings and Solon Road between Washington and Northfield Roads. Uh, I encourage War Two residents to attend and ask questions at the special War Two, uh, meeting, which will be held here in the city council chambers next Monday at seven o'clock. Uh, eight thirteen High Street housing and vehicle violations. Uh, there has been noticeable trash cleanup around the outside of eight ter- eight ter- eight thirteen High Street. Uh, prior to any dismissal of the citations under review by Bedford Municipal Court, I would like to make sure adjacent residents are satisfied with the cleanup, building repairs and vehicle issues are, are resolved and in compliance with Bedford ordinances and state law. Uh, thank you to our city staff and law department's diligence to get the property owners to finally take the city citations seriously. It is unfortunate that it takes the possibility of criminal prosecution to get some people to be responsible neighbors. Uh, city street repairs, many streets in War Two were badly in need of repair after numerous winter freeze and thaw periods, snow plowing and street salting that quickly deteriorate our street infrastructure. Like other War Two residents, I was happy to see potholes being patched. Uh, Mike Cushion residence called to report potholes that may have been missed and could cause their vehicle damage or car accident.
They can either call, uh, the city manager's office or they can contact the Service Department directly.
Thank you. Uh, apartment buildings in War Two, in addition to visiting homeowners in War Two, I'll be visiting apartment buildings, uh, next week to talk with the apartment residents. Last time I visited certain apartment buildings, I was shocked regarding the general condition of the buildings, which in my opinion were substandard. Some security doors were broken and as were some windows and screens, and I viewed, uh, a general lack of cleanliness of public areas. This should not be an acceptable standard in Bedford or anywhere. And if there are building code violations, the landlord should be notified of the violations, given time to make repairs and held accountable if repairs are not completed. Uh, stolen shopping carts that I've seen on these properties in the past should also be returned to their owners. Uh, Bay Market property, six oh seven Northfield. Uh, Mike, would you please give us an update on the, uh, Bay Market property?
Uh, they were present in court today, uh, and then they were granted a thirty day, uh, I believe, extension, if you would say, to, uh, show, um, improvement.
Uh, thank you. Tef Park, I visited, uh, Tap Park last week and found a large amount of trash scattered around, uh, the parking lot, including broken glass from beer liquor bottles, a failed or cement floor. Resident at the park with his daughter said there were several cars of teenagers or twenty-somethings loitering in the parking lot before he arrived. And another family had left the park because they felt unsafe. The residency justice security cameras should be installed to help, uh, monitor activity at the park. I checked the park today and the city crew did a good job of cleaning up the mess from last week. As I've said in the past, Tef Park has always been a neighborhood park for children to use the playground equipment and for recreational use, not for loitering during or after park hours, vandalizing property, replace, or a place to drink booze or smoke pot. When facilities are not regularly maintained and monitored, families stop using them as often and avoiding of family or community recreational activities filled by people who cause problems at the park or in the quality of life in the neighborhood. Uh, Tef baseball field, um, any parent or kid who would otherwise want to use a baseball field for a game or practice couldn't do so because the field is not usable in current condition. I know it is early spring, but I would like the field to be in usable shape as soon as possible. There are baseball teams willing to pay for field use too, but the fields must be maintained. I spoke with one of the, uh, with one coach who told me they drive to Schrean Falls to use the field. Mike, can we get the park's recre- recreation department to get the baseball field in shape so neighborhood kids and families have a place to once again play baseball this year?
Yeah, we, we go around and we do, um, we do maintain and we'll, all those fields will be dragged and utilized. I will say, um, any teams that has expressed interest, that field is not big enough for any of the travel teams looking to rent space. So even if that field was perfectly manicured, it is not of the proper size to do so. We utilize Bedford Glenn's Hutchinson Field, Ellenwood Field, um, the, even the largest field we were able to use for, uh, don't hold me to this age, but I think it was a ten U tournament for girls softball. We utilized that at Greencroft. That field's just simply not large enough. Typically it, it used to be used for managers pitch and T-ball. Um, and there's just not sufficient numbers for that right now. But we will, as far as dragging and maintaining the field for like a recreational, like a family who's wanna go there, sure. Um, but it is not one that would draw the interest of the teams that are looking to rent space in, in town.
Uh, a question of clarification. When you mentioned T-ball, because there are two, or there were two, uh, baseball fields there, but the T-ball was on the smaller field. Are you referencing the larger field?
Yes, the lar- the, the, that field. Yes. The T-ball almost a little few years ago.
Okay.
I, I don't know the exact yardage on it.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you. Um, end of report.
Mr. Blue Hardy? Uh, Mike, I wanna have you thank, uh, Sean or, or Clint for patching up Northfield Road. He's the bitch or gripe or whatever at the council war game. All of a sudden it was done the next day, which I appreciate. So anyhow, uh, also everybody, again, uh, cut grass. That's when everybody's out to great help the weather and the rain and everything else. We gotta get caught up on that. Um, cause they're gonna be coming around. Uh, the guy's gonna be checking everybody's grass for you. Uh, end of report.
Thank you. And I just wanna give a shout out to the Recreation Department for the Easter egg hunt. Uh, a week and a half ago at the, uh, high school football field, uh, they, they do a great job with it every year. And, uh, they break it down into three groups of, uh, the little toddlers and then, uh, five-year-olds or whatever, and up to twelve-year-olds. Three different fields. So the big kids aren't taking from the little kids. And it's just fun to, to watch these kids and, and using the football field. Now it's perfect because you don't have to worry about the mud and everything else. And they put out, I don't know, like three thousand, five thousand eggs in them. A lot of eggs that have stuff in them. And they spend hours preparing the field. And then they have to count down and boom, when they go, ten minutes later, there is nothing on the grass. It is, and it's awesome what these kids do and clean it all up. And they all leave with smiles and, and again, kudos to the Rec Department and all the people down there. So, uh, that, that's always a fun event for the kids. And with that, we have a huge agenda to take care of. So we better jump right into the first thing. Ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty-five.
Is an ordinance amending section nine eleven point zero seven, uh, eight of the Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code entitled Charges for Installation of Meters at Service Connections for Water of the City of Bedford and Declaring Emergency.
And, uh, because this has to do with, uh, a money issue, uh, we would like to put it on first reading, but Mike, if you could give a brief summary of what the ordinance is?
Sure. Uh, this is, the last time the city adjusted our rates for replacement water meters was in twenty fourteen. Uh, the updated pricing that we're proposing, uh, reflects the current cost of the equipment. And it includes not only the cost of the equipment, the actual meter itself, but also the electronic reading transmitters that are included in that equipment. And this, this applies to new construction, new commercial, new residential construction where, uh, they would have to purchase the meter as well as if we would have to go out and we identify a neglected or damaged piece of equipment that would need to be reinstalled. This would be the current cost of that equipment.
Thank you. We have a motion. Need a motion for, uh, first reading by Spinks, second by Salvi. Call roll please.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
That concludes our business. But this time, we have the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address and your comment.
Barbara McDaniel, one eight six Center Road. Uh, I have lived there for fifty-three years. And we had unadvised guests yesterday. And my family spent some of their Easter having to pull the steps up from my back porch because Puxitani Phil came from PA to live at my house. And last year, we had five or six groundhogs that we caught. And I think you're gonna have to get another animal warden because the neighborhood is so infested. There's a pond in the middle of the woods, just up this street, goes over to Logan Street. And I have a friend that lives almost at the end. And she said, Barb, you can't get rid of them. She said they built a condo in the pond. There used to be a farm up there. So there's a pond, a stream which goes under Center Road and over by Ellenwood. And this is getting really frustrating because you have to put a cage out to catch them. And, uh, I don't think our animal warden wants to go on his tummy and get under my back porch to get a hold of them. And it's an ongoing problem and every year now it's getting worse. We never had them before. We had raccoons and other rodents. And there's nothing to attract them there. There's a garden of flowers. So I don't, I don't know. It's, it's really frustrating knowing. I'm getting too old to do that. I used to have cats under the front porch strays, so we put hardware cloth up so they couldn't get there. And I know the warden at that time had a lot of fun trying to catch those. But I'm not a game warden. I'm, I'm, and they're cute. Yes, they're cute, but I don't want them in my yard. So that's the end of one thing. The other thing is, and I know you're not supposed to have two things, but today it, it just woke me up a little again. I'm going down Broadway on the curve to Union. There's a kid on electric scooter, no visible orange clothing or green or whatever, going down the center lane. Then he decides he's gonna go in the curb. Then he pulls back over and he's going fast. They're not visible. Is there a law against this? And I see it all the time on Center Road. And they're goofing off, weaving back and forth. And, uh, they aren't licensed, but it's a vehicle apparently. They use it like a vehicle. And there's no visibility. There seems to be no law to deal with this kinda stuff.
Yeah, there probably is, but they could say.
You know, and then if you hit them.
If they're still a vehicle, they have to apply.
You go to jail because they were stupid. You know, if you wanna do that, go in the side streets. But it, it's getting dangerous.
Yeah.
And I see a number of kids and usually on pairs or three, they can't decide which lane they wanna be on. So they're switching back and forth. And it's kinda nerve wracking, especially for us older people that live around here.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I am. But thank you. And I hope everyone had a good Easter. We did, except for the groundhogs.
I got Pat Charlie living under my shed. Feel your pain.
And they are cute, the little puppy chews on your teeth. But when they chew the lattice under your porch to get at the birds under their way.
That's cute.
Too much.
Mike, you can talk with, uh, police chief about special attention on the electric bikes. Uh, I've been noticing more of them out lately.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Amber Joyner and, um, I come to you from Congresswoman Chantel Brown's office, her district office. And I just wanted to come in and say hello as, um, the direct contact to her office and tell you a little bit about what we do at the district office and some events that the Congresswoman has coming up, um, if you'd like to share with, uh, your residents. Um, first, um, and I will, uh, leave this information, uh, with Tracy, but, um, we do provide constituent services. Uh, we have caseworkers at the office. So if a you or a resident is having trouble, um, with services from a federal agency, we act as liaisons to reach out to that federal agency to assist. Um, for example, with you, USPS or HUD, we have a lot of immigration cases, VA cases. Um, so, uh, you would just refer them to our office. Um, some events that have, that have been going on, I'm not sure if you all are aware, that the Congresswoman had a well-attended, uh, town hall, uh, in February, but she has some coffees coming up, which are mini town halls. Um, on March eighteenth, she had two. Um, one was, uh, in Cleveland Ward seventeen at the Gunning Park Recreation Center and in Cleveland Heights at their community center. But the next one is tomorrow. Um, it's in Cleveland Ward three at the Urban Community School at six thirty. Um, there's still time to register for that. And she is looking to have, um, a few more, uh, this year, um, on this, uh, side of town. This Friday, um, April twenty-fifth, um, at one o'clock, um, there will be a social security town hall, um, at Benjamin, at the, uh, Benjamin Rose Conference Center on Fair Hill Road in Cleveland. Um, the Congresswoman will be, um, uh, speaking with, um, uh, participants, of course, majority senior citizens about social security, asking any questions that they, answering any questions they may have. And then there'll be a special guest, um, Martin O'Malley, former commissioner of the Social Security Administration under President Biden. Um, I want to also mention that we have some passport days coming up. We had, uh, our first successful one, um, uh, on March eighth at the, uh, Cleveland Public Library, the Rockport Branch on the west side, um, which was well-attended. We just asked if people come with a completed application and the, uh, correct fees. Um, I actually got my passport, uh, there at that, um, uh, event. And I just got it in the mail last week. So, um, so, um, we, the next passport days, there will be one at the County, uh, Library, the Nathan Heights Branch on June twenty-first, at the Cleveland Public Library, the New MLK Branch on August ninth, and at the County Library, the Garfield Heights Branch on September sixth. All are from ten to two. Um, we will have our small business expo coming up on Saturday, May third, and our housing expo on June seventh, both from nine to two at Tri-C Corporate College East. Um, so I have some flyers that I can leave with you, um, with, um, detailing these events. Um, also our, uh, Service Academy, uh, nominations, um, information about that. Um, the Congressional Art Competition for high school students that might be wanting to submit, uh, their artwork. Uh, the deadline was April fifteenth, but it's been extended. Um, and I also have just a Washington one pager for you all to let you know what, uh, our Congresswoman has been doing in DC. Um, and, uh, I will leave this information to lovely clerk. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thanks for keeping us informed.
Sure.
Kathy Williams, four nine one Lamson. First off, if we can get Congressman Brown to look or talk to the Postmaster General in regards to our post office, which is, paint is falling off. It is in disrepair from the outside. Huge chuck holes in the pavement where your, your cart bottoms out. That would be greatly appreciated for everybody in this area. Second, yes?
I just wanted to add to that. Um, staff member in my office, our, uh, administrative assistant has been on the local post office since December. Um, started with replacing this mailbox at this location. Um, but it has since brought up the condition of the parking lot, the condition of the entranceway, uh, could just lack of upkeep. We've expedited that and went above the local representatives at this, at this location and had a conversation last Thursday with the regional rep, uh, expressing our concerns and our building department. You know, we, we, we like to be good neighbors. Um, but as I expressed, that we try to hold ourselves, the city, to a very high standard and we think they need to do the same. So our building department was working to formally write them up. Um, not something we wanted to do, but we, uh, we were getting very little, uh, response from the, at the local level. And it is a very poor reflection, a very poor reflection on, uh, on the community. It's just not acceptable. So we are, we are working.
But I think she would have a pool. Don't you think she would?
That would be great. That would be fantastic.
We probably should have the pool and should have the money. So, and that always comes down to this. Anyhow, um, now that the trees are budding, Lamson has so many dead trees. I mean.
Dead.
Does the city, their tree lawn, is there a schedule? Is there, or just when somebody complains?
Oh, we do, we do pruning schedules. We, we have a pruning schedule that we tackle every year. The city's broken up into five different locations. Um, I'll have our arborist, we do inspect trees. I'll have them check that street.
Yeah.
Obviously if there are fully dead trees.
Fully dead. No, okay. Like there's one tree, the top is literally twisted off and is hanging in the dead branches. I don't want somebody to.
I don't want somebody to, you know, car go by and that decides to go, but there are quite a few really totally dead.
We'll tickle it.
Mary Zalagowski, one two four Garden Street, to Congress, or councilperson, Jano's point.
She's getting like promotion.
I have a lot of faith. To your point, I wanted to bring something to the microphone that I read online. There are a lot of properties listed in our area under the county auditor's office as being under the ownership of the city land reutilization program, including a thirty-seven acre property on Palmetto, and I was just curious what that group was and what the future-looking goals are for those properties.
I'd have to look at what that thirty-three acre in Palmetto, my guess is that is the river ravine area.
It's by Maria.
Yeah, yeah. So that, there was property that was deeded to the city, God, a long, long time ago. Part of that was also, we worked to enter into a conservation easement with the Western Reserve Society, and they were working on erosion control. That is the property that kind of goes back all along through the back of Palmetto Woods, and they were working to address those issues, so that is city-owned property. City, it's, the Land Reutilization Corporation is basically city-owned property, it goes into this separate entity for tax purposes, it's tax-exempt, doesn't cost us anything. That's where that property is basically held.
But it doesn't bring income either, then, I guess?
No.
Because there are a lot of properties.
Yeah, that, well, the Palmetto property is not developable.
No, 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 but there are a lot of other properties all through the city.
So some of the other properties would have been homes that might have needed to come down, where, we don't go outright and purchase these homes, but, you know, I'll use Center Road for an example, there were two homes there that we couldn't do much to it, we couldn't get grant dollars to tear them down until we took ownership. They were hundred thousand dollars in back taxes, goes through the county sheriff sale. If no one purchases those, the city has an option to accept those properties if it goes through two sales and nobody purchases them. So basically, the county takes the loss on those back taxes, and the city could take ownership. We only take, we will not take ownership to a property that's occupied, will only address properties that might be vacant or condemned, because once we are an owner, we are then able to secure grant dollars to tear it down. So some of those, you know, Henry Street was a home that was back taxes, Center Road, we'll do those to take the properties down, then on occasion, we'll offer to neighboring properties if they want to split it and take it. Others, we've held on to because there hasn't been an interest, builders have inquired on certain properties, but that is those residential ones, how we've ultimately become owners, because most likely the home that was there was taken down. We did not purchase any of those, it goes through the process of the county sheriff sale. The other one, I think the property that was deeded to us in Hemisphere?
Yes.
That is also in the land reutilization, and that we worked to sell five acres out of Beauty, we've sold to Lake Shore, we've sold to Cleveland Tank. There is five acres up front, right on Egbert Road, Cleveland Tank has a five-year option on that, so I do anticipate they'll be executing that, and that'll be two other parcels for redevelopment, but it goes into that kind of holding entity until we utilize or transfer it.
Very good. Do you have any idea how many RFPs came in?
No, I'd have to, I'll be pulling that later this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, I do know, I will say, one of the, one of the big inquiries that we've had was, is this city going to contribute to demolition? And I, it's one of the things that we expected. I don't know if anybody that wants to take that to reuse it, unfortunately, so there were a number of inquiries. Is the city going to, city going to contribute to taking it down, and if the city applied for brownfield funds, which we did. We are waiting, state of Ohio, so hopefully, you know, those funds will come in, but it is something that, that may be where we end up. We may end up taking that down, and then it becomes a much more attractive space to developers, knowing that it's a clean site, shovel-ready, and not a developer having to take on some of that demolition, so.
Anyone else? Is that bottom? Hearing, can I have a motion for adjournment? By Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Hansbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.